You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 12th meeting for the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Okay, well, I think we're going to get started. Let's all stand towards the pledge of allegiance. All in this meeting.
..........................................
Okay. Joan, can you do a roll call, please?
President Dunbar. Vice President Samantha Arnold.
I am present.
Ralph Bott.
Present.
Sam Paxton.
Here.
Rich Young.
Yeah.
I'm here. Attorney Brad Adamsky.
Here.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix. Hearing nothing, he's absent. Police Chief Mark Swistick.
Present.
Thank you. Park Board President Gene Paxton.
Present.
Thanks. VZA President Matt Bowen. I'm sure he's absent. Building Commissioner, Code Enforcement Officer Brian Alexander.
Here.
Bloodpoint Administrator Andrew Bertocini. I don't see a new face here, so. Plan President Isaac Zekel. I guess he's not here either or on the web. And website technology Samantha Arnold, which you just answered. Road Commissioner Bob Zielkowski.
Present. In the Long Beach Police Department, this town has ever had them still last over.
And still what?
Last year.
That doesn't mean it's any lesser. Just keep rolling.
I'd say.
Just keep doing what you're supposed to be doing. No complaints. Police departments closed.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we need to adopt the meeting agenda that Dinah sent around to the town council. Do we have any changes, additions to this agenda?
I have none.
I have one at the end of the meeting notes. She has upcoming Michiana Shores meeting. The park board should be the 18th, not the 25th. As the park board has chosen to reschedule their meeting for this month. So that needs to be updated.
August 18.
August 18, yes. Okay, anything, nothing else? Sam, Rich?
No.
Okay. Then I need a resolution, don't I, to approve the minutes or not?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with your change.
Any motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor of adopting the meeting minutes with the change that I suggested?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting minutes have been, meeting agenda has been adopted. Now we need to look at the meeting minutes from the last town council meeting. Looking Joan to see if you've sent those.
Yes, she did.
Yeah, you did. You sent those three.
Are you two talking about the one on June 10th or July 8?
One from July 8.
What changes do you want?
July 11th, sorry. What was the date?
It was July 8.
And here it says the preview minutes made of July 11th, so it should be July 8.
You must have an old copy, not the new one I sent out.
The agenda says 11th.
Well, the agenda said. I was talking about the agenda for today, so.
Oh, okay, I had to do the agenda. But the meeting minutes adds on at July 8.
Right, so when did you?
So I'm not changing it because I know it was July 8 because I checked it on.
That, hold on, that's.
Well, I'm not asking you to.
I'm not asking you to. When did you, there, yeah, I know it's written on these ones. Does anyone have any changes?
I do not.
Nor do I.
I do see a change. I'm going to double check. In the meeting minutes from last month, it says the March 31th additional vouchers would be this month, but I believe, double check, I thought we did all of March last month.
No, I think the March.
We did the March regular one, but I thought we did both.
I don't even know what I sent to you, though, there's so much going on.
We approved March additional vouchers, March 11th. As far as I know, and then the March 31st, we did not need to approve again because those are actually the same as the April.
So, no, you asked that the March ones be separated into the end of March and April 8. And I believe I sent those to you.
Yes.
I sent things out on the 9th of April and I sent things out again yesterday.
I'm sorry, say that again, Joan.
I sent some of them out on the 9th of April, 9th of August. I sent some out to you and I sent some out to you yesterday to council.
Yesterday was May. As you said, it was May, it was the one that's, as far as I know, I don't know that I've got them. But that was not March, it was just April that you said earlier. So we don't, there should be no need for March additional vouchers, so that should be. I don't know if there's any reason to have that from last month's meeting.
Hopefully I have time this month to go through every one of them and see which ones you've had and which ones you've signed and which ones you declined and see what I can do with them.
Okay, so, do we have any other changes or additions, or do we have any change or additions to the meeting notes from last month?
I don't.
Okay.
You guess.
All in favor of approving meeting minutes from the July 8, 2025 town council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Who made the motion?
Ralph made the motion. About to read the second, though. Okay, the motion is approved.
Who was the second?
I don't think we gave one for meeting minutes.
If there's no changes.
There's no changes.
That's okay.
Okay, so those are approved. Okay, let's talk vouchers, Joan.
Yeah.
I was talking to her, distracted. Call for the vouchers again.
What, what's that?
I was talking to her, distracted, so you need to call for the vouchers again.
Okay, let's, let's go through the vouchers for this month. We should be seeing, let's talk about, we'll see in April 1st through April 8. April 8, May.
Before you get into July, let's finish the last month and sign the ones that you approved and signed.
I want to talk about, see, and we need.
What do you need?
We will need April 1st through April 8th, May 13th, and then July.
I have July, I don't have the other one, but I think I sent the code previously and I didn't make a copy of them.
Well, if we don't have them to review and approve and sign in the meeting, then I'm going to get pushed yet again. Don't be, that's not good. But this is July 8.
That's the one I just sent you. My note said it was passed. The one that I asked you to send, I mean to sign, passed it last month but didn't sign it.
Yep.
Are you signing the minutes or are you letting Dinah sign the minutes?
I'm just checking, I'm checking what I've got before I look at them. Let's start with May 31st. It was supposed to be the May 13th and these say, May 2025 additional vouchers. Last month, we said they were May 13th. Are these one of the same?
No, I separated them. I separated so that you would have the first part of the month and the second part of the month, and those are the ones I believe that were sent out on the 9th. I didn't receive any comments back on them, so I didn't print up the summary sheet. So if you approve them tonight, I'll have to print up the summary sheet and get it to somebody to sign them.
I have nothing from you on the 9th. And I'm going to double check, so. We got the council minutes from you on the 9th, I remember that because I applied for those, but I have nothing from you on the 9th.
On.
August 9.
On 9th, I sent the May additionals, the April 8th.
Today.
The May 13th, March 11th, and the April 8th. And I sent you some of the payroll, the May payroll and the April payroll.
I have from today. Let's look here. We have May 31st, July, two Julys, and then August.
The two Julys are the same exact document.
Okay.
Yes.
And is it just that I didn't see it? Do you guys have the, an email from the 9th of this month with, what did you say it was on it, Joan?
Just a second, I'll repeat it. I have the May additionals, April 8th, and May 13th, the March 11th, the ones I had to separate for you.
From August 9th.
And it had the payroll taxes on it and the payroll taxes from May and April. I believe some of those you sent, you approved last month. March 31st additional vouchers and March 11th vouchers. I redid so many of them.
Did anyone else like, and you want to have them printed out right after us?
No, I don't have a summary sheet and I don't have them printed out. I don't print yours out, but I send them by email.
Does anyone in the council have that email from the 9th?
No.
Okay.
But you should have, I have the summary sheet and the vouchers from July 11th to July 31st.
Those are in the email that we got.
And then the other one I have, July 11th to July 31st. So I'll approve those and give me time to go through the others and I'm going to go through all the meeting minutes for the last three months and see what's.
So.
And I'm going to separate.
First, we're going to start with, you sent us June additional vouchers to sign. Will you approve these?
It's also right up in the corner of them that I sent around.
Ah, I could not get your hand on it. I do see that now. Thank you for interpreting.
Can you share those?
Yeah, I am going to interpret these.
June additional vouchers, you're looking for blessings.
Yeah, thank you.
This is June additional, this is June additional, are these the same? They are. So, yeah, we approved these last, June additional, we did approve last month, so. Okay, then you sent us May 13th. And it says, now, we were looking for the May 13th, this says May additional vouchers. This is May 31st additional vouchers. That seems to be different than what we were wanting to approve.
The May additional and the May 31st, the same thing. Those are the ones that are written at the end of the month.
Right, we weren't looking for those, we were looking for the May 13th.
Okay, do me a favor. At the end of the meeting, mark every one you want because I am going to start going through all of these to make sure that they're signed and they're separated, and I'm separating it from the first to the meeting date and from the meeting date to the 31st or 30th of the month.
Okay, so, oh, another thing I want to know, when you first started with the, this council,
they only wanted the summary, they didn't want me to print out every employer, I mean, every payment that went to somebody. Which way do you want it? You want it according to every payment that went through or do you just want a summary that shows the funds and the appropriation?
We, what you've been giving us that has, you used to give us the funds and appropriation and you show the payments so we can see what the bills went out to, that would be great like you were doing before.
With the bills that go out to, I'm not going to give you both. You either have to decide whether you want the summary that shows the fund and appropriation or you want every bill that I pay.
I'd like.
I like the reports you've been giving us, we just don't have to go through them line by line.
You don't have to read.
The format that you've been using is great.
You want the line by line, what I pay? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's not going to read.
We'll determine if we have questions.
Well, when I started with that, they said you didn't need that, you only wanted the summary. Now we're changing.
No, we're not changing anything.
Not at all.
All we, no, we just don't want you to read every line by line, Joan.
I think the public has a right to know it.
Well, they can come in.
The public can request those level documents, I think the board is just saying maybe expediting the meetings. They just don't have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll review them ahead of time and if we have questions, we'll bring them.
And they're public documents that the public wants and they have access to.
Yeah, they should have access to. Okay, so we are looking at May 31st, that was in our email, I'm also going to make a note of that, put in the meeting minutes. Actually, meeting minutes going forward, just as extra clarity, clerk will provide the council.
I'm the clerk, true.
With detailed, what's the right terminology? Detailed voucher reports or what, how we're looking to call that?
The account payable vouchers.
Detailed account payables voucher ahead of each meeting, but will not need to read aloud the details during the town council meeting. Okay, so, in front of us, we got an email, May 31st additional vouchers for 13, 11, 64. This is May 31st, so this will be the end of the month.
It would be the end of the month. But in the future, to save confusion, I am going to show it from the date, the first of the month to the date of the meeting and from the day after the meeting till the 31st of the month.
Okay, that makes sense.
I hope so.
Do we have two?
Because I have to do something different in the computer that requires more time.
Okay, so, any questions for the council for these appropriations summary, the additional vouchers for May?
I guess, is there a reason why it took this long to get May additional vouchers prepared? The date that you ran this report was yesterday. Is there a reason why we can't have it closer to the May date?
It will, it'll be what I said in the future. There's a lot of interruptions and the way the computer system is set up, anything that.
Recording stopped.
I did not have on what they call a register, that's how I get to print the.
Recording in progress.
All vouchers. If it's not on a previous one, it'll show up, that's why you're getting all this other stuff. So I have to make sure that if something is different, that I delete it from the report. And if you approve it twice, doesn't mean there was two payments made. There's only one check sent for each voucher.
Can you repeat that last part? If we approve it twice, it gets paid twice?
No, I said it doesn't get paid twice.
Okay, thank you. I didn't think that's what, I want to make sure I heard that.
It doesn't get paid twice, there's only one check for each voucher.
Got it. All those in favor of approving May 31st, 2025 additional vouchers, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
No. Ugh. Sorry. Aye.
May 31st additional vouchers are approved.
Was that Ralph and Sam?
Ralph made a motion, since there was no changes, we do not have a second. Next up is, the, so we have July 12th to July 31st and July 10th to 31st. Looks like they're both the same.
Yeah, it's just a same file. Is that different?
They're the same file, they have different names. One is July 11th.
To July 3.
Oh, actually, they're both, yeah, they're both the same file, they have different file names, but they're exactly the same. Should we have two instead of one? I mean, should we have two different ones instead of two?
Unless I attached the wrong one.
July, so this is July 11th through July 31st.
Yes, it picked up some of the July 11th ones. I don't think it picked up all of them.
Well, yeah, this is.
That's what I mean by it's picking it up.
So we can review this one, but we'll still need, what's missing will be the July 1st through July 10th, which we'll have to do next time. Is that correct?
Wouldn't we have done that in the?
This has, this has.
The July 8th was the meeting.
Right.
When we've had the first week of.
Oh, we had that in the last one? Oh, that's right, we did. And we have those approved.
So you needed it from.
Oh, yeah, you're right, we did approve July 1st through 8th last time. And that probably had the, yeah. Okay, so, we have the July 11th through July 31st, this has paving, parks, things like that. Any questions?
Nope, look good to me.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the July 11th through July 31st vouchers? Well.
Aye.
The motion on your post, I move that we pay the vouchers. The motion is granted.
Okay, so what you're going to do is never have a second if there are no questions or no things changed.
No changes.
Okay.
I'll double check my login through the boards again, but I believe that's sufficient. Okay, now we need, let's see, these are done, and then August 1st to August 11th.
I have a question about the two entries for the fire protection for August.
For what?
On your report that you printed, there are two entries for Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department.
Yes, there is.
3,008, 31, 92.
There's actually a few more up top, too. There are duplicates, 105.
We pay rent of 105, there's two entries for the fire department.
Yeah, why is the, why are the two, why is the, no, those entries are repeated, so there's two, two entries for 105 and two for the 38.
That's right. It should say on there, one is for August and one is for.
It does not say.
June.
They all say fire, they all say August.
Both say August.
They all say August.
But one's for, the date on it will be August.
No, the description is on August.
The description is August.
So it looks like they're duplicates.
They're not duplicates, though. One is for June, and you want me to redo it?
Hold on, they would have to be duplicate because the amount at the end of the page is not, oh, no, it doesn't, sorry, I wasn't going to get that, I looked like it was, didn't add up correctly. So are you saying that one is for, they're for two different months?
Correct.
Can we get these corrected? Because it, it looks like we're paying twice, we're paying August twice.
Sure can.
So these will get corrected and then we'll have to approve them next time.
That is for the one, is that what, July?
Also.
No, this is the August 1st through August 11th.
She's saying.
Of the 12 vouchers.
11, okay, I have to make sure that it.
Fire protection is correctly described. And once we're done with that, the other thing that we are still waiting on is the April 1st through April 8th vouchers. And we did not get those in our email.
Okay, I don't know what happened.
So we will need those also for next month.
So we need to sign a couple of the ones that we approved.
Yes, and we need to sign, so May 31st, approved, not signed. We signed.
We approved two.
We did not sign.
The last one that blew.
Yeah, and we need to approve. So August is approved, not signed, April was to wait, not, May 31st, we approved but did not sign, July 11th to July 31st, we approved and also did not sign. Got three to sign. Okay, let me know when you're ready to move on, Joan.
Continue.
Great. Next up, a resolution of ordinances, I don't believe we have any. Great. Then we move on to our favorite part, we need our department reports, starting with you.
Oh, I, I do have something to add to my report.
Oh, you do?
Yes, I'm sorry. I believe that Susan Cohen had straightened out Sam on this $100,000 that I, the way I posted it. I got an email from her and she explained.
She confirmed that the fund is still, it's obligated by the CD, but she was not confirming what my question was regarding it showing up as an accounts payable in the state system. And she said it, you saw it in the email, her response, unless you didn't get that email.
She didn't tell me it wasn't.
She's saying it should not appear as.
I mean, I can read the email to the whole.
Don't read it. I, Craig was in who was also an accountant with Susan and he said there's no other way of posting it.
That's.
And I asked, he said.
That's all it's.
Put it in writing and they will not give, she, they did not answer me.
We'll take it up, there's no sense in wasting more time on this.
I agree. I feel satisfied that they said it was done right.
Anything else, Joan?
No, that's it.
Okay.
We need for the month of July, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 520 calls per service when compared to 471 in the previous year for an increase of 49 calls per service. During the month, 18 incident reports were documented and a total of eight individuals were arrested. Specific to the town of Michiana Shores on July 14th, Sergeant Mitchell Sykes was contacted in reference to an individual needing a welfare check. This was done, yeah, it's just on a higher watch list, right? We investigated it, come to find out, the family member needed a mental health evaluation of which we assisted with. During the investigation of that call, the individual also battered family members and we filed with the La Porte County Prosecutor's Office and a warrant issued for the individual. Some days, they're after. Some days thereafter, was arrested by the Michigan City Police Department on a traffic stop for outstanding work. And we've since followed up with the family and will continue to do so to see if we can offer any further assistance to them. Aside from that, there is nothing major to pass along in the town here. We will continue our radar patrol, traffic enforcement for the next month. I did share with all the council members the information about the license plate reader cameras. Last night at the Long Beach Town Council meeting, we presented to our town council all four of our entry points to the town. We are recommending that we place cameras in our town at $3,000 per camera, which is a total of $12,000 per year. How we plan on funding this project is through the Lit Public Safety Tax. As all of you know, that tax can only be used, that revenue that you receive for your police and fire department. It can't be used to buy a snowplow truck or items for the park department. It has to specifically be utilized for policing fire. So I would recommend that maybe the town council, as we move forward into next year's budget, maybe consider placing one, at least on El Portal. Will be our recommendation, one of your busiest roadways. They are very beneficial. The information that I shared with you is real-time data that we receive in our police cars. And it alerts us as someone enters your community that may be wanted on a warrant or may be wanted for some other serious offense. And that also has 30 days of saved video. So if a crime was to occur, we could go back and review the video and possibly be able to give suspect vehicle information. Every vehicle that passes the license plate readers, the license plate reader cameras take a video photograph of the vehicle itself and the license plate. So it's captured and it's stored for a minimum of 30 days. You can store it longer if you wish. But again, I would encourage you that, you know, maybe we look at placing one or two in the town of Michigan Ashores, maybe in the next year or two. So actually, work with Joan to see what revenue you do have, you know, left in your fund.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
And I'd also encourage you, maybe just Google Flock Public Safety Law Enforcement Cameras. There's a lot of information on the internet about those.
Thank you. Do we have a report from Gary? I did not get an email.
I don't think we got a fire report this week, yeah.
Okay.
Does Gary, Gary has an assistant chief, right? Because I know Gary's out quite a bit. Is it possible we could ask that person to, to join? Anyone know?
It's a bad idea. What do you think?
I'm asking him to run a layer. I'm sorry, Bob?
I said, "I'm asking him to run a layer."
Okay.
Did you ever get to set the report?
Pardon?
No, we did not.
We didn't get one?
Well, mainly he sends it to Dinah, and Dinah's been pretty tied up, so she may not have...
Yeah, maybe.
He sent it to her, not, yeah. He sent it to all of us, perhaps, that's the other, I'll ask him to that. Building Commissioner report, Brian.
In the last month, we've done four building permits. Air conditioning installed, generator installed. And 208 Sunset was the demolition of the home and the rebuilding of the, of the new home. In that context, I would like to ask anyone that's a member of the planning board...
Do I have one, please, Brian? Oh, thank you, got it.
You got one?
Yes.
If there is a member of the planning board who has the applications for 208 Sunset, they, they were in the office, but they, with the checks, but then they disappeared.
So they, I, I need to ask the planning board, I wouldn't reach out to the planning board.
If we could get those applications back, because I asked her to refile them because she, she turned in earlier ones that were on a different, an earlier form. And I said, "Well, put in new ones and put in the one for the pool." She did that, but no copies were made. And so we don't have a copy before their record. And I don't really have the correct copy to send to the port, but I did send to the port anyway.
So does...
Who has the...
We signed two sets of copies at the meeting the other night.
Of the building permit application? Not the drawing? You didn't sign?
Well, I don't, I don't think I have it here, but I have a copy of the building permit application. At home, I can get you that.
Well, if it could be dropped off at the office here, that would be great. Because we'll, we'll need that for the correct paperwork to be filed for. And then...
For 208 Sunset?
For code enforcement activities, we, letters were sent out to 406 El Portal about the overgrown yard and tree branches. 3619 Birchwood, about accumulated equipment and junk in the yard. 311 Dogwood, about accumulated junk carts and junk items stored in the yard. And two, two items are pending. 422 Pine Wood with Mike Wolf, he has junk carts lying in the yard. And 3630 Birchwood, Devon Chubb, she has inoperable garage doors that are left in the open position. That we need to have her rectify that. I'm waiting for approval to try to send the letter to them. Okay? That's it.
Any other questions for Brian? Next up is Park Board, a report from Jean Paxton.
Service gate continues to be a thorough job cutting the grass and trimming in all of the hall or areas. Amy Black, Rob Tupperman, and Emily Hurley combined efforts in submitting an application for a grant to commute a tree. We will be notified of the award in October. This would contribute greatly to the Save the Forests project, which we are hoping to expand into other town lots. The project has been renamed Save the Forests, one tree at a time. The project has been redefined and its main mission is to save the mature trees on townhome lots. The baseball and tennis courts have been getting a lot of use. We can park looks, although bear due to the swing set being removed. The Park Force 2026 goal is to replace some of the playground equipment. We need as much help from the town as possible. Right now, we have extra funds, but we are holding back because we might have additional tree work after the drainage board comes through White Ditch this fall. The damaged boards in the ranch of the BZA all have been replaced.
Have any questions for Jean? Okay. Bob, Road Commissioner, you are up.
24 hours to put in the locusts, the poggos, uh, boulders, and remove a lot of trees and branches.
Great. Thank you. No fighting plan, no fluke plan, BZA. Dinah is not here. The White Ditch, unless Brad has anything you can tell us about that?
Drainage board met this morning. White Ditch was not on the agenda, but I asked for a recon meeting at the end of the meeting. They said everything's still on schedule, looking around November.
November.
November?
Yeah.
Okay.
Obviously, if anything comes up at the next meetings, then keep it going.
So I thought they had talked about it earlier, like September?
I think they were looking at the fall, but today they said November, so.
Yeah, they weren't committal about an exact starting date.
Okay, next is me for the website. I will send over the printed version later to the town council. I do not get a chance to do that. So I can say that, uh... Some of our little bots are gone, so the traffic is about the same. Yep, I'm just gonna leave it at that. But in terms of the popular pages, it'll be sad to know that the Oriental Vodocelli garlic, garlic mustard plant were falling down favorably. It was being taken over by the Arts for Parks, the Park Safe Events, Events Page, Parks and Beach Pages. Those all get a little more prominence right now. We'll see what happens in the fall with the beach. So nothing too exciting on the website. And Dinah's not here, so I don't think anyone's going to be nervy. Which means next we go to unfinished business. And the first item up on here is an update on the codification product, project for the town code. The town council has sent around an email or delivered it to Rich, contract and the summary of the contract from American Legal that the committee we have in place to update the town municipal code. And recodify it is underway, and we have submitted this to the town council for approval to get the project off and approve, sign the, get the contract signed by Dinah. So I open it for any discussions.
Where, where's the committee on making a determination on who they recommend?
We're recommending American Legal.
American Legal?
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that's the one that's endorsed by AIM?
Yes, that's endorsed by AIM. It's Long Beach, Usasun, Shusterton, Family Shores.
Their pricing seemed a little bit clearer than...
Yeah, some of it. Well, and one of the other ones we've had, that's gotten back to you multiple times.
We had a really good meeting with the sales guy for American Legal. He answered all of the questions that we had accumulated over a month or so of discussions. Pretty confident they know what they're doing and it's a fair, seems like a fair price.
It's a, it'll take six to nine months, probably, end to end. They are just working with towns, obviously. And they will, you, you get, they can split your billing costs over two budget years. So it's, so we can pay half this year and half next year.
So the whole process...
What's that?
The whole process takes in data that we have stored electronically and then...
Paper, anything, actually.
Books.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they can take just about anything and incorporate it.
And I know from looking through all the ordinances that there were a lot of ordinances to repeal, prior ordinances, they'll catch all that.
They will catch all that. They will also check it against Indiana law.
I saw that.
They said that once, once this is complete, this was a really good talking we had, that once they had gone through all the ordinances, compared everything, made a new version of the code, the kind of the final step is the town council approving this code and officially making it an legal code, which means if someone unearthed an ordinance previous that contradicts this, that is not enforceable. If they unearthed an ordinance that is not contradicted, that seems valid, that will still be valid. But it, it clearly resolves any issues of contradiction, which is very nice.
Very good. Thanks for your help on that, guys.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the, the quote from American Legal and choose them as our vendor and move forward.
Ralph has made a motion that we accept American Legal as our vendor and move forward with approving their contract. Do I have a second?
I second.
Uh, we have a motion to approve and a second motion to approve from Ralph, second from Sam. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The motion is passed, or yes, the motion is passed. And then we can get Dinah to sign it and we can do a resolution next month for you, Joan, so you have it.
Can I have the cost, don't I?
The cost will be $4,800, half this year, half of that next year. And then next year, there'll be also $495 for the horse fee. So the second half will be 2150 plus 495.
That's the recurring fee.
That's the recurring fee.
When we have any ordinance that gets incorporated, there's a...
So it's...
inexpensive cost to incorporate.
$4,800 divided by two.
Okay, but you said 2150 for something.
41, so I was trying to do the right math, so... $4,800 divided by two.
It's 2,400.
And then that, the second year, that 2,400 adds 495 to that.
495 to it?
And then every year after that, there's a recurring 495, 495.
What's the 495?
For the web, online version.
A web? Okay.
Then there'll be a small fee each time you add an ordinance.
Right, there are. And you can decide if you want to go yearly, every couple of years, and they have a price for per page to update the code.
Does that link out from our website, is that...
Yeah, I'll just put a link, a nice little link, and we can put a little logo on the version. If you look at the Long Beaches version, or...
Yeah, our code that would pop up would have...
Yeah, it'll look like Long Beach.
Yeah. Next up, an update on road...
Did you vote on it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion by Ralph.
Second, I'm voting Sam.
Okay. Update on road payment. Is there an update?
I don't have anything on it.
Uh, no, there was some emails that bounced around about payment, but Joan said that she had paid the...
The payments are done.
Paid that.
As far as I know, unless there's something extra that Global has not given me. They're the administrators.
It seems like it was right.
Okay.
They'll let us know.
They will let us know, this is true.
Something's missing.
Um, update on message board?
Uh, well, Rich and I are working on a plan. We'll probably be able to get to it, it'll probably be September, hopefully, before we start working on it.
Hopefully, it's cool, right?
Which one, is this for out here?
Yeah, for out here.
Yes. Can't you tell by the window we need it?
Okay, next up is update on letters sent to property owners regarding yard upkeep.
The two that were served notice earlier by Brian at 404 and 406 El Portal have not been responsive. Now, um, the town, I think, has some options to, to pursue. There are three areas within our code that you can refer to on this. They're, define not only the condition that would warrant it, but also the steps that the town could take to correct it and what that means for us and for the property owner. And hopefully, both of, both properties will not need to go, go much further on this. But there, uh, care, I'll just read the title of it. Care of premises, our nuisance ordinance. And then there's an uncodified ordinance 2012-15, which is titled, "An Ordinance for Removal of Weeds, Rank Vegetation, and Regulation of Unmown Grass and Plant Life in the Town of Michigan Ashores, Indiana." I read through this because I hadn't really looked too closely at, at that, anything else other than the nuisance ordinance. And it, as we talked before, when we were trying to say, okay, what, what is the definition of an uncomp long? Or they, the code references blight, you know, a property condition, condition that is blighted. And I'm sure Brad can kind of help us as we try to decide what we want to do. Because there are, and I think, honestly, I think the ordinance needs to be updated and amended because there are people that purposely want a dune-looking lawn. There's several of them that are in the, in the town that you can all walk by and see. I'm sure we all do. And yet, then there are, how do you separate that from, from a property that we're pursuing? And I think there's a difference because there's some intent on the homeowner. It's not easy to get a, a property to look like a dune and stay like, stay like that. So, but there's also overall general neglect of the property. And I think in those two cases, if you walk by it, drive by it, both of those addresses, you'll see that they're, they're both homes are relatively abandoned. 404, we know the story from Chief Swistec. And 406, um, they're... And 406, they're never here, and the house looks like it, and they're, it, it's a process that's been 10, 15 years of accumulation of little things here, little things there. And I, I just think that the town has, has the right to pursue some of these, so I think we should take it to the next step. The next step would be for us to serve them with a notice that we're going to file a nuisance claim against them, and then hopefully result, get it resolved at that point. If not, we have the right to go in and rectify the situation, charge the customer, the customer, the resident for that work that's done and treat it as an accounts payable to us, or accounts receivable. So we need to look at these and talk about them. There's more, as, as Brian mentioned on, on the list, that he's working from. But I think these two are already received the initial letter, correct, Brian? And no further contact from either of them?
Well, for 406, we were going to send them a letter. However, they, they didn't mow some lot of the property.
Yeah.
So a letter would never stand. But I sent a letter last week, that's the first time.
Okay.
And so now they are, you know, we got, have to clean up their tiles, debris, and their woodlogs, and also keep some of the weeds in check. It's just a halfhead sort of situation.
Okay.
And they got mold growing in the garage.
So we won't pursue that one until...
That's 406.
Give, give some time to hear, hear back from them.
Yeah, we give some time to correct that. We have sent them the letters, it's coming, but for 404, they were sent the letter previously, and they're...
Okay. Chief Swistec, do you have any update on the situation with the owner at 404 El Portal?
I'll have to check with Sergeant Science. I don't know.
Okay.
So 406 was responsive to a point.
Yeah, they did cut the grass a month or so ago.
Parts of it?
Yeah, but, you know, they've got milkweed growing, and I left that there, and so it's... They obviously were paying attention, but they did it in a hurry. Let's put it that way.
Okay. Did anyone notice the cross from 404 on the opposite side of the street? The tree limbs and branches that are out by the road?
Across the street from 404?
Yeah, there was a tree that fell. I'm not sure which property it fell from, but it got moved. And I don't know, Bob, did you guys move it to?
No.
So our next up with 404 is into sending notes and another letter?
I, I think we probably are obligated to send a, you know, show that we're trying to reach out to them and get a response. We don't know if there's another individual that's responding on behalf of the resident or not.
When you're sending the letters, I assume you're sending them to the owner of record with the county, yeah?
Yes.
And then you're putting them, are you sending it personally to the house, too? Are you going to copy at the house or on the property?
Copy wasn't that the property, but, but I think they would send to the property. That's going to be...
Same address. Okay. Yeah, sometimes if they're different addresses, you both mail it and also deliver it. Yeah, I mean, the steps you're taking right now are preliminary, right? The nuisance notice, which is typical, and it's definitely in your ordinance, but it's in most municipalities, it's putting them on formal notice through service, like notice of violation or notice of nuisance, and then giving them adequate time to respond to that. Then if they don't take time, that's what gives you the authority to take action.
Okay.
So that's, you know, it's, it's up to the board if you want to state in the informal letters that you're sending right now, or if you want to escalate it to the formal Either way.
Next up is new business. I have nothing on the agenda for that, believe it or not, which means we move right on to Brad's report, attorney report.
Nothing specific to report, other than, we do have the court dates, and how you've been talking with Regis to try to get them.
Yes. Mrs. called me on Friday, Friday evening, and I was not able to, she asked if I was available to come now, and we were out with friends, and so we, I told her that I could come tomorrow morning or any other time that she had available. She then said that her son was there, we met, and that he's got some vehicle issues, lives in the port, and Mrs. apparently also has some vehicle issues. So I told her that I'm happy to come over and anytime if, and then Samantha offered to join me as a second set of eyes to just kind of help them understand a little clearer. But, I mean, I'm, I'm going to make myself available as much as I possibly can.
Yeah, we've got some time. I've been expulsed with September 29th, so we even got another meeting for them September 29th. So just keep me informed of that. Then on the other one with banks, I've got, that's on the, I've got to get that resolved with, with the fine essentially, to get that resolved, to get that dismissed. And again, September 29th, they're both scheduled for the same day.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you have, you have a record of banks having a...
We have a notice of citation that there is originally issued, which was part of the complaint that we filed, purely initiated litigation.
So he does all the filing?
There was a, there was a citation issue, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Lay's business, I have nothing. Communication is received, so you have anything there?
Joan, did you receive any communication through your office?
Did you get anything from me?
No.
Then I didn't have anything. I'll go over them right to you the minute I get them.
Got you. Now we have time for a public comment. Sure, Brenda? What's that? Oh, okay. Council comments?
I got a comment.
Oh, you have a public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, public comment.
And hello, stand up, Lauren.
I'm Ken Bikes.
Okay. Let's talk.
Um, the, uh, for the citation, as far as, that's a, uh, how do you put it? First citation to me, I've been, how old is that thing?
She filed June 11, 2022.
Oh, you're pointing to June?
Yep.
Okay, citation was for...
Building without a permit.
This is not... Okay, the, um, the, the first building, um, that was started COVID, 2020. And I, there was no, that citation should have been given to my contractor.
So there was, the stop work order looks like she issued July 1, 2021, and then she issued the citation June 2022. So the, those are the documents I have.
Okay, so the, uh, uh... I guess that would be between my attorney and there, correct?
You have an attorney?
It appears I need to get one.
Well, I mean, always advice, but, but, I mean, basically, the way the town is looking at this one is, I believe you filed a new permit application?
Correct.
Right? So we want to get this resolved, so that it gets dismissed and gets behind you, and then you can go through the permitting process if you need permit.
Okay. So the, well, first order, first order is that, is defined in the file order next month.
File what from next month?
The nuisance.
The nuisance.
Right.
So...
I've got a nuisance court date on the 29th.
29th of September, which is what we're trying to get resolved.
The, well, the nuisance is gone, so...
Correct, but the, but the fine was not.
Okay, so, but is the fine, the fine was not in, in the court table?
It's part of the complaint.
Okay, part of, okay, all right. So I need to...
You and I need to talk for about five minutes after the hearing, or after the meeting, and then we can discuss the terms and get that resolved.
Okay, all right.
Council comments? Well, then I call this meeting adjourned.